You are watching Access Laporte County Channel ninety seven. Coming up next is February twenty first, twenty twenty three meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. You can find more information for this meeting by visiting www dot access Laporte County dot org.
Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to our Tuesday, February twenty first meeting of the Michigan City Common Council. We take a moment to silence electronic devices and stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and the Silent Prayer.
The United States of America and the United Republic, which stands on nation under invisible liberty and justice.
Ms. Nyla, can you begin the roll call, please?
Mr. Dabney.
Present.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Present.
Mr. Matt.
Present.
Ms. Deitch. Present. Mr. Don Presvolinsky.
Present.
Mr. Paul Presvolinsky.
Present.
Mr. Simmons.
Present.
Ms. Jigus. And Ms. Tillman.
Present.
We have eight present and one absent.
Thank you. Ms. Nyla, we have a quorum and we continue on to approval of minutes of our February seventh meeting. Motion to approve. Of a motion to approve by Councilman Don Presvolinsky and seconded by Councilwoman Deitch. Ms. Nyla, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Paul Presvolinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presvolinsky.
Aye.
And Ms. Simmons.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Reports of standing committees. Captain President, no. Our Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. President. The Michigan City Finance Committee meeting met this evening, February twenty first, twenty twenty three, at five thirty six. There was a quorum. We reviewed the claims and funds number two, five, zero, four, Boyd Development, zero dollars. Review claims and fund number two, two, three, five, Riverboat, thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars. That amount is a combination of Laporte Chrysler Inc., six thousand four hundred and thirty five dollars, and MC Matt Rappers, Inc., seven thousand five hundred dollars, totaling thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars. No, no new business and standing items. There was no resolutions and we discussed two of the ordinance that will be heard at tonight's council meeting. And currently, Riverboat's statement of cash position, fiscal year to date, February sixteenth, twenty twenty three, six million four hundred and sixty nine thousand one hundred and thirty two dollars eighty two cents.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tillman. Was there a recommendation from the committee?
There was a recommendation that passed to approve the Riverboat Claims and Fund number two, two, three, five, in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Claims docket, February seventh, twenty twenty three, fund twenty-two, thirty-five Riverboat claims in the amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars. E F T zero, fund twenty-five, zero, four, Boyd Development, zero dollars, for total claims, an amount of thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty five dollars. Is there a motion? I've seen. Second, a motion by Councilman Paul Presvolinsky and seconded by Councilman Don Presvolinsky to pay the claims. Ms. Nyla, on the roll call, please.
Mr. Paul Presvolinsky.
Aye.
Ms. Tillman.
Aye.
Mr. Dabney.
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Aye.
Mr. Matt.
Aye.
Ms. Deitch.
Aye.
Mr. Don Presvolinsky.
Aye.
And Mr. Simmons.
Aye.
We have eight in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla.
I also vote aye. Sorry, I'm here. Apologies, I'm here a little bit late. Thank you.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Italia.
Okay, reports from boards or commissions.
Evening, members of the council. President Fitzpatrick, thank you for giving me a few moments today. Have to tell you that I've been here for a while. After thirty years of coming to this meetings, the last couple of years, sitting at home in my Lacy boy in my family room, watching it on TV while I have my dinner, was a little more fun than being with you. So, thank you for for having me back. I'm going to be brief because I know you have a busy agenda. First of all, I want to thank Clerk Nyla for her assistance. Our longtime, I'm, I'm, excuse me, Ron Miller. I live at thirty, thirty-three Woodrow Avenue, Michigan City, a board president of the Michigan City Community and Richman Corporation. And our longtime former board member and administrative assistant, Sue Webster, resigned in January, right in the middle of our grant cycle. So, it has put us back a little bit. So I wanted to report to the council, but I also wanted to report for the not-for-profits in Michigan City and the, and the public that we're a little behind. We have had some board turnover the last eighteen months. I know some of you are aware of that. But I'm extremely proud of the board we have. We have two new members that attended our, our February meeting for the first time. And Pat Harris, who some of you know, who serves on various boards and commissions, has agreed to be our interim administrative assistant and is helping us to get, get the word out to the recipients. As all of you know, the Richman Corporation was founded by the original operating agreement between the city of Michigan City and Boyd Gaming, and provides seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year. The first one hundred thousand dollars by statute goes to the Washington Park Zoo and the balance around six hundred and fifty thousand dollars each year is distributed to not-for-profits within the boundaries of Michigan City area schools. This year, we received seventy applications, and I should explain, some of you know this, but we accept applications for projects and not for organizations. We have had some talk about maybe limiting the number of applications we receive from each organization. My concern about that is if you have a local organization that's doing great work and you limit them to three, there may be a worthwhile project that won't even get considered for funding, simply because they're well-run and operated with another organization. We're going to debate that. But in any case, we had seventy applications for just under one point six million dollars this year to distribute six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We met a little bit late, first because of Sue Webster's resignation and also because of some changes in the board and some illnesses. So we didn't meet until the end of January. But I can tell you, there has been some discussion. I've had some discussion with some of you about some difficulties with the Richman Corporation, with the makeup of the board and some of those issues and so forth. But I can tell you that the board came together. Our total deliberation took just a little over two hours. And during that time, we awarded thirty-four grants totaling six hundred and thirty-six thousand three hundred dollars. So the, the fact that we were able to do that in two hours should tell you that the board is, is unified. We had some really solid discussions and I'm really pleased and happy with the makeup of our Richman Corporation board right now. And one of the other things that happened was that as we were wrapping up, a couple of our board members realized that there was one organization that we had given forty thousand dollars to last year that because of running out of funding, we didn't fund at all. And it was an important organization. We know they need the funding. So we kept carrying that over to our February the eighth regular meeting. And we were seeing a, an update on our finances. Because we're pretty stingy, and I'll get to that in a moment about spending money, because we do have expenses for attorneys, for the banquet that we'll, we'll be conducting next month, for legal fees and so forth. So we do have some expenses. We had about forty-two thousand dollars left over. We allocated twenty thousand dollars of that to that organization, keeping the twenty-four thousand as a cushion so that we can pay any expenses, including the banquet that's coming up. So we actually awarded six hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars, which is actually more than we received in the current cycle. So we were very pleased about that. We are a little behind. The letters went out last year on February fifteenth to the not-for-profits. They're not out yet. Pat Harris is getting up to speed. And we're also coordinating with Criterion Catalyst, who does our computer work, and so it's taking a little bit longer. But we will be getting those letters out shortly. We're in the final process of getting the letters prepared. And I want to invite members of the council. Some of you, I know, Councilman Chris Volinsky and Don Chris Volinsky in particular, and Councilman Nelson Deitch has been to some of our banquets. We're going to meet on March the twenty-third at Blue Chip. We'll have two representatives of each of the organizations that will be receiving grants, will be presenting the checks on that night. I want to invite each member of the city council, as well as Mayor Perry. I was, this before I was on the board last year, but there was confused, some confusion about Mayor Perry's invitation last year, and, and so I want to make sure that that doesn't happen. I will tell you that we only invite individual guests. If you want to bring a guest, we've, and we've told our not-for-profits, the charge, the blue chip is forty-six dollars, and so that's the charge for a guest. And the only reason we do that is because every dollar that we spend is a dollar we can't give to not-for-profits. So we're very stingy about that. Our attorney, Mary Lake, agreed in twenty twenty-two to work for the entire year without any compensation. And so that allowed us to take the money we would have spent to legal fees to give to more organizations. Obviously, when we have requests for one point six and we award, reward six hundred and fifty-six thousand, there's some organizations that are deserving, that are not going to get the money. But when you sit there and listen to these organizations, you find out what truly great local organizations we have in the Michigan City area, and that's why I invite all of you to come. And again, that is on March twenty-third. We will send a note out. I'll make sure that all of you are notified, the nine members of the council and the mayor. If anyone has any questions about the Richman Corporation, I'll be happy to answer them. But I'm really pleased with the, where we are right now and the direction we're going in.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. We're definitely encouraged by what you've said, and we wish we had more money to give out, but there's a limit to things. Are there any other questions for Mr. Miller?
Good question.
Councilwoman Deitch.
Yes.
Jigus.
Yes, I remember in the past, are you going to publish all the names of the organizations and what they got? Okay, so in the paper?
We'll, we'll, we'll prepare them. That's one of the things I thought about the other day. I don't even know who prints those for us, but again, when you lose your longtime administrative assistant, we're struggling a little bit. Gail, you and I will be talking about our agenda for March. But, but yes, we, we do prepare a, a four-page document that we hand out to all the organizations at the banquet, and we give that to the local news media and they will publish that as well. So, and if anybody on the council wants one, obviously we'll get it to you. So. Any other questions? Councilman Presvolinsky.
I, I don't have a question. I just wanted to thank Ron for his involvement in the Richman Corporation and all the members and all the previous members because I was an original member of the docking ordinance and how we got the boat and how that came out through an agreement, you know, with Boyd. And I think that it's helped our community out so much and all the other communities that get us stipends from the boat that people forget about that we passed in our legislation.
Yep.
And no, I just, I thank everybody on the Richmond Corporation now and in the past. Thank you very much, Ron.
Well, I think we added it up. I think former Mayor Brilson and I kind of did some heads figuring and I think we've had out something like eighteen million dollars, and that doesn't count the seven hundred and fifty we're going to hand out this year. But eighteen million dollars, and you think about what that means to our local not-for-profits and what outstanding organizations we have. It has been a godsend, and, and you're right, Paul. The, the, the council and the mayor and the people that were involved at the time had a lot of vision because that's something that has really helped this community, and a lot of people don't think about it. But it has been a, a major part, and I'm happy to be back. I was served for six years, as you know, and with my wife's health, I had to take off for a few years, but I'm happy to be back with the Richmond Corporation and, and I thank you. Any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Tommy Kalavich, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I'm a member of the Michigan City Fire AmeriCommission. I have a public service announcement to make. Attention upwardly mobile teenagers, young adults, college students, so you know, kind of like mine. Michigan City Washington Park lifeguard is needed. Lifeguard, twenty-five dollars and fifty cents an hour. Assistant lifeguard, twenty-four fifty an hour. Head lifeguard, twenty-seven fifty-four an hour. Requirements: Must obtain a lifeguard certification. Must be just sixteen years old. Will have a free lifeguard. Must have a valid driver's license. We will have a free waterfront lifeguard course. Dates to be determined. Submit applications to the Michigan City Fire Department Administration Building at twenty-five ten East Michigan Boulevard. It's two doors next to McDonald's on the boulevard. Or here at City Hall, one hundred east, east Michigan Boulevard. Need more information? Send us a message or contact us at two one nine eight seven three one four four zero, extension four zero zero four. Or contact our Public Information Officer, Ms. Tia Free at tfreede, michigancity.com. Here's a chance for your children to make more money than what you make. I also want to, I want to support Captain Barrett Taylor and the members of the Michigan City Fire Fighters Local Four Seventy-Five. We're going to open up our contracts back up and we want to benefit from the lit tax. I feel that although every member of the Michigan City Fire Department, all the way from the fire chief, the oldest probation officer, they, they should be able to make four thousand dollars more. The Laporte County Sheriff's Office is benefiting. Now, now there's the Long Beach Police Department, the cellular port. I know for a fact, I asked Sheriff P., I asked the deputies during the, the campaign, I said, how much, what's the starting pay for, for first years? Their probationary deputies start at fifty-two thousand. That's been raised to fifty-six thousand. After one year, they become a full deputy because I have extended family members and a member of law enforcement agency downstate. After one year, they make sixty-five thousand dollars a year, and I think that's what they, they would get, four thousand dollars a year. Additionally, they should get an additional vacation day for the month of their birthday, like the contracted, contracted city employees are now, are now getting. I just want to thank you and support them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kalavich. Any more reports from boards or commissions? Any reports from special or select committees? Reports of, from the mayor or other city officers and departments?
Thank you, Mr. President. Mayor Perry, Michigan City Mayor. An update. This afternoon, three P M., the election board met in Laporte to review protests against three candidacies that were declared. The one from South County, I'm not going to report on. But the two from Michigan City, Mr. McCormick's son, the objection to him being on the ballot was not honored, so he will be on the ballot for the first ward. And then a fellow by name, Todd Saturday, filed very lately, right before the end of the period, and his voting record was reviewed and was decided that there was some confusion whether he was running at large or in the fifth ward. I think it was the fifth ward he attempted to, to file for, and his candidacy was refused. So that's that's what I'd like to report to you. One correction. Mr. Kalavich, Tommy, you need to understand that labor negotiation, police and fire will not be reopened for the desires of you or the Fire AmeriCommission. It will be with the agreement of this body of, okay?
I just want to support them.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mayor Perry.
Any other reports of city officers and departments? Petitions?
A petition was received in the clerk's office on February thirteenth. A petition for voluntary annexation into the city of Michigan City Great Lakes Capital LLC, the petitioner.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Communications.
Correspondence was received in the clerk's office on the thirteenth of February from Barrett Taylor, President of the Michigan City Firefighters Association regarding his request to open contract negotiations between Michigan City Firefighters Association, Local Four Seventy-Five and the city of Michigan City.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Resolutions?
There are no resolutions this evening.
Ms., can you please read our first words?
An ordinance on first reading by title only. Creating section two dash four one nine of the Michigan City Minnesota Code to establish criteria for utilization of public safety lit funds, and this is introduced by Ms. Deitch.
And it comes from the sponsor.
Yes, I would like to amend by substitution, and the sponsors are myself and Paul Privolinsky. So I would like to make a motion to amend by substitution, and you all have received it. And it's basically just changing the percentages.
Thank you.
We have a motion by Councilwoman Deitch to amend by substitution and seconded by Councilwoman Tillman. Ms. Nyla, on the vote, please.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Dabney?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Deitch?
Aye.
Mr. Don Presvolinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jagus?
Aye, but I have a typo that I would like to point out.
Yes, please do.
Where it says five percent and then it says ten percent.
All right.
The word, the word five is spelled out, but it meant ten.
Yes.
Kind of saying, so I don't know if you need to amend that.
I don't have.
All right, thank you. Yeah, aye.
And Mr. Paul Presvolinsky.
Aye.
We have nine in favor and zero opposed, and for the amendment.
Thank you, Ms. Nyla. Any further comments from the sponsor?
Sure, yeah. So, and thank you for catching that. I did it in one spot, not the other. So this is in reference to our lit tax for creating buckets for where the money, what the money can be used from, and I'll just read, I won't read the whole thing, but just read a couple of the whereas clauses. And whereas the Michigan City Common Council adopted Resolution forty-eight thirty-seven in support of the public's safety lit, requesting an annual comprehensive public health and safety fiscal plan from the Michigan City Administration on Programs, Initiatives That Will Utilize This Funding Prior to allocations. And whereas the Michigan City Common Council understands the need to attract and retain police officers and firefighters to continuously improve the quality of life and safety for all of our residents and businesses. And the buckets that we have created are sixty percent utilized for salaries, benefits, retirement, or pension funds. Thirty percent to be utilized for capital improvements and training. Capital improvements and expenditures, I should say, but we'll clean that up. And ten percent to be placed in reserve for capital expenditures and improvements. And the reason for the reserve is that, like this year, we have a fire truck that costs eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. At least over the, over the course of time, if they know they need a truck three years from now, we, we could say, well, the reserve has built up this amount of money. And the reserve will not be utilized until it reaches a minimum dollar amount of one million dollars. And must retain a minimum balance of five hundred thousand at all times, unless there's a two-thirds vote from the council to, to spend more than that. So basically, we're just trying to, to figure out a way for them to be able to plan for those big purchases, but still use all of the lit and then kind of build up a, a reserve over time. So that's what this ordinance is for.
Thank you, Councilwoman Deitch. Any comments from the public?
Hello, everyone. Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Great idea. Something that should have happened, but at what point, when, when will they quit coming to the city council, asking for money from everywhere else? When will the Riverboat Fund stop going to buy fire trucks? Not that I'm against it, but we got a street department as well that needs equipment. We got neighborhoods that need streets as well. So, you know, we try to do this with the rainy day fund for the council. I hope you get back to doing that and quit spending money out of it as you feel free to do. And just I, I comment about the rest of stuff. Don't comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Don Presvolinsky.
Yeah, I have a question for Councilwoman Deitch. You just go over the percentages again. I just want to make sure I heard them properly.
Yes, it's sixty. Yes, it's sixty, thirty, ten. So sixty percent for salaries, thirty percent for capital, and ten percent for reserves. There was a typo in the second section that we have to fix.
Okay, so it's sixty-five, thirty.
Sixty.
Sixty.
The new one, yeah.
Okay, all right. That's what I wanted to clarify.
Yes, sixty, thirty, ten.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilman Deitch.
Yeah, just real quick, looking over the, the percentages there with the sixty, thirty, and I mean, yeah, sixty, thirty, ten. I was looking at this and thinking, if we put the sixty and the thirty together, so that way in any given year, if we had to increase the amount that we would use for capital improvements or even salaries where they increase, you know, we could go back and forth between the two. If we put ninety percent in, in those two buckets together, and then we wouldn't be, have to do sixty percent for salaries and then, you know, thirty percent for capital improvements, that would give us some flexibility in terms of moving around within that same bucket of money. Because at, at one point, like you said, with the, the cost of a fire truck or whatever it may be, things like that pop up. You know, maybe we need to spend a little more out of capital one year, not as much with salaries, or maybe we have a chance to do more in terms of salaries and less than capital. So I was looking at that. And I'm not proposing it as a motion. I need to do some more research on it and see how this all works itself out. But I think that would be a good idea if we thought of it that way as well.
Thank you, Councilman.
Just one thing I forgot, and this starts in twenty twenty-four. I know we've already started spending money and allocated money from the fund, so I don't know where that, those buckets fall. So that's why it says beginning in year twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you, Councilman. Councilman.
Yeah, and to, just to refresh my memory, on an annual basis, that's going to be four point three million dollars, correct? Yeah, for a basis, four point three billion. My Councilman, Paul Presvolinsky, I'm not done yet. And were these percentages run past the city controller and what she thought about any of this?
I didn't hear anything back, but I did the calculations myself, and I know that a lot of the conversations that we had were around salaries, benefits, and we know for a fact that pension in our, in our finance committee hearings for the budget last year said a quarter, a quarter of it was going to be utilized for perf or pension already, twenty-five percent right off the top, is what they planned for. So I don't know if you all recall that, but that, that was stated. So that's kind of why I came up with the additional amounts. If we're looking at doing salaries, and again, as Mr. McCormick stated, you know, with the fire truck, you know, we ended up, we were going into the reserves and, you know, for, we were going into the riverboat, and then we switched it back to the lid, which is appropriate. I think that this amount, I just kind of did a guesstimate. I don't know if, if Controller Half-Master or the mayor have any any issues with the percentages. If so, I mean, I guess they could verbalize that to us, but it's kind of what I just jotted down and kind of came up with the calculations.
You know, and people on a finance committee, we, we talked about this and we talked about also having any money available. So with getting anything done, we need to look at it as this money is going to be taken back out of the budget and put in the Riverboat funding so we can do things in the neighborhoods or whatever we need to do. And I think it's most appropriate that we keep that in mind and we build up the Riverboat Fund. So as Mr. McCormick talked as Mr. McCormick talked about that, we're constantly taking money out, but now this is a chance to, to put money back in appropriately. And we'll, I'm gonna talk to Angie about some additional language in this, um, to, uh, finalize that in this ordinance, but also we need to have an ordinance so that people know our intentions on what we're gonna do with this money to protect the riverboat funding. Because just as Mr. Miller alluded to earlier, what the riverboat funding has done for this community. And that how much, I think we're gonna get into some research on how much was in there, how much was spent over the last twelve years and, uh, you know, we, we need to keep that in perspective. Now, we also need to keep in perspective on the amount of what equipment is needed or what is wanted. There's a big difference between needs and wants. So I think that we need to keep that in mind also on, uh, what's needed. But what was brought to my, uh, att- attention tonight when we were in our finance committee that we're already spending money that should be coming out and being reused out of the lit fund and for the lease package with the police. So I think we're gonna have to formulate an ordinance just to deal with that. Or put an amendment or, or do something for that. I don't know. I'm gonna talk to Angie about it in, uh, uh, other members of the finance committee to see where we're, where we're going on that. So we cover all our bases. And money is, this is our intention, this is what we're gonna do. And move forward. And also another point is that this is gonna be a rolling scale on this amount of money. Because people's salaries should be going up every year. So y- you're not gonna be set at one amount because it'll change monthly because people, their, their wages should go up on a quarterly basis. So you know, the, just because we get into the, you know, these percentages right now, I think that we need to look at and Angie is correct that this was talked about in our financing hearings last year on the pension, uh, monies and and salaries besides equipment. So I think that, that covers all the bases. We may not agree on the percentage per se, but we need to look back at the, uh, anticipated budget for this year also. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Davin, you got a question?
Yeah, just, uh, real quick, in regards to the riverboat and additional appropriations for this year. Uh, as I recall, I think, I thought we only had one. Um, the fuel farm with the airport. I don't recall us doing a, a, additional appropriations other than that this year. I don't know. I won't, I won't ask you to answer that, but if, can you provide that, uh, for us in between the meetings? Um, because I, I remember kind of keeping track of that and, and I think the only additional appropriation was for the fuel farm that came out of Riverboat. I have to, I want to see that, that information, but I'm almost certain because the, the narrative is that we light up that Riverboat Fund, but I, I think there was, that was the only additional appropriation that we did.
Thank you, Councilman Devon, uh, Councilman, uh, Don Presley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Yeah, and this is a, uh, a question for Ms. Hoffmaster, city controller. And I don't know how much time you've had to, uh, you know, look at these percentages and, and think about them at all. But do you have any comments on the, uh, percentages?
No.
Pardon? Okay, thank you. And then just, and just in one more comment, please. Uh, as, as, as far as what we're my thoughts are on the Riverboat and the effect, you know, the lit's gonna have, and I voted for the lit because I know it was going to help the city budget overall and free up monies to use elsewhere. That I think what the concern is, is that the Riverboat account is down to, I don't know, four point five million or something like that right now. And that's the lowest because you got the reserves, you add those two together and it's eight million. But I'm just talking about the Riverboat right now. That's down to four million and that's one of the lowest, uh, numbers of the Riverboat that I've seen since I've been on council. So anyway, I think the overall gist is to, you know, not spend that money. And if it's only been one appropriation, well, it's been one appropriation. The bottom line is, is we're trying to reserve that money for other things to do in the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman, uh, Paul Presley.
Well, um, we, we did approve a, uh, uh, thirteen thousand nine hundred and thirty-five thousand dollar, uh, claim, um, out of a Riverboat for the lease with the police department, and that's an ongoing monthly lease that be could, could be recaptured and should be recaptured. And also the balance, the ending balance that, uh, we were agreed upon this evening at the finance committee meeting was six million four hundred thousand sixty-nine dollars and a hundred and thirty-two eighty-two. So that's not including the subtraction of the money that was allocated for the unfunded annexation of the four hundred and twenty acres. So that means that when that is purchased after they do their, um, uh, the pu- uh, water and sanitation gets their, uh, uh, engineering study done on what it's gonna cost to wh- how much material they need in that and they order the equip, uh, materials. It's gonna come down, I believe, to what, what we allocated, two point, one point five or two point five. So actually that rolling, that rolling balance is gonna drop by quite a bit when they order that material. And, and that is, then that's the whole purpose of recapturing this money, to put it back in a Riverboat Fund.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms. Nyla, can you read our next ordinance? Our, that, that ordinance will be held over for a second reading. You read our next ordinance on first reading.
I'm perceiving. And ordinance. Excuse me?
I'm sorry. Read our next ordinance by title only.
An ordinance on first reading by title only. Annexation of certain contiguous area of real estate consisting of approximately thirty-two point eight six six acres located in unincorporated La Porte County Cool Spring Township, Indiana, south of County Road West four hundred north, west of County Road north nine fifty west, north of east west section of the north frontage road and east of the north south section of the north frontage road and declaring the same area to be part of the incorporated jurisdiction and within the city limits of the city of Michigan City, La Porte County, Indiana pursuant to Indiana Code thirty-six dash four dash three. And this is introduced by Ms. Jagus and Ms. Deitch.
Any comments from the sponsors?
Yes, um, so this is for, uh, everybody should have a copy, um, a map, um, at the desk. Um, and, uh, this is for an industrial development and we have here with us this evening. Um, I know on Zoom, uh, Jeff Smoke from Great Lakes, but we have here in the audience that you come up and while Drew is putting up the map on, on Zoom, and we have Isaac Hall from Great Lakes Capital and Steve Ruby from Avon Marsh to, um, talk a little bit about the annexation and to answer any questions from the council.
Good afternoon. Uh, my name's Isaac Hall. I'm representing, uh, Great Lakes Capital, li- located at seventy-four ten Aspect Drive in Granger, Indiana. Um, thank you for your consideration this evening. Uh, we're, we're looking to do about, uh, three hundred thousand square foot industrial development um, on the south side of Michigan City here. Um, and that's inclusive of a two hundred and ten thousand square foot, uh, warehouse along with a smaller seventy-five thousand square foot warehouse. Um, and that is directly across from the Walmart there on County Road four hundred. Um, we, we'd love to be a part of the city. You know, we know that there is a, a huge demand for industrial space in the area. Um, we were contacted by Clarence Hulse uh, about a year ago, um, you know, kind of addressing their need for industrial space in the area. Um, we do a lot of industrial development in the Midwest and, uh, would love to be in this community. And, uh, wi- with me is, uh, Steve Ruby. He's, uh, available to answer any technical questions about the site. Um, and Jeff Smoke is on the Zoom as well to answer any questions from the Great Lakes Capital side.
Any other comments from, or any questions for?
Yeah, welcome to Michigan City. Yeah.
Thank you.
And, uh, as far as the, are these solar panels i- in the front? Right here?
No, th- those are, are just awnings, uh, for the entrances, but now that you mention it, we, we do.
Look like solar.
Yes, we, 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 we do, uh, oftentimes put solar panels on the top of our, our buildings, uh, which is a big draw for tenants who want to be involved in renewable energy.
Any other question? Uh, Councilwoman Tillman?
Um, with these being warehouses, um, how, how, what, as far as job opportunities, um, how many positions would you be seeking?
So these are speculative buildings. Uh, we, we start the, the construction process without a tenant. Um, and, and the idea behind that is to have a completed space they can occupy in a shorter timeline than doing a build-to-suit type project. Um, typically what we see, um, is one job per every two thousand square feet, and that's what we've seen in our buildings across, uh, the Midwest.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, other questions?
Assistant accounts. So, uh, my understanding is that the infrastructure is very close by and it's not gonna be a big deal to connect to a city water and sewer.
That, that's correct, yes.
Right. Steve Ruby, uh, at, at Marsh Consulting, three fifteen West Jefferson, uh, Boulevard in South Bend, Indiana. Uh, we're helping with the site development plans. We have coordinated with the utility departments with various of sewer and water um, on this project site that is readily available. We continue to do coordination efforts with them as these plans develop. Um, obviously it's early stages right now, but, uh, we are developing the plans, um, in the fashion in which is being requested to, to provide, uh, services to the buildings for. And one additional request, uh, of the council here is that, uh, before this in a two reading process as opposed to three, if you take that consideration, we would appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Presley.
Um, how much is the, uh, are we looking at the, uh, infrastructure? Um, for the, uh, buildings? Are, is the city on the hook? Are you guys going to, uh, install the, the, the tap-in and run the lines?
So at this point, um, w- we are working, uh, on, on the, those costs. I believe it's about a quarter of a million dollars, uh, to connect to uh, city sewer, storm sewer and, uh, city water. Um, right now, we're, we're in our early stages of underwriting this project, um, so we've yet to determine um, who would be on the hook for those costs, just based on the overall size of the project.
Well, I think before we do any second, uh, move to second reading, we need to know the figures and, and what we're looking at and what's gonna happen. Because, um, I, I'm not against development, but, um, is this in a TIF district?
Counsel, counsel, can you guys hear me? Okay.
Yeah.
I'm Skylar York. I'm the Director of Planning and Redevelopment, um. Hello. Skylar York, Director of Planning and Redevelopment for the city. Uh, it's not in a TIF yet. Uh, we have had discussions, preliminary discussions about possibly, uh, uh, bring, bringing an intuitive, creating its own TIF. Um, we haven't gotten that far on what exactly, but we have had those discussions with the redevelopment commission and, uh, with the developers.
Well, it's right next.
Absolutely.
Right next door.
Right next door.
How would that work with it?
We would have.
Some first?
Yes, we have to annex them first, um, because technically we can't make any decisions until they are part of the city. Once they are part of the city, then we can make a decision with your, um, you know, it would get, be an ordinance that would get approved. We would start the ordinance and then it would get approved by, by the council um, to, to annex, to, to, I'm sorry, to put them into a, uh, TIF district.
Okay.
We would have to extend our redevelopment area, things of the nature. It's a few more steps, but in general, yes.
So I have any, has anybody done any preliminaries on, uh, how much revenue would be developed on, on this development?
We're, we're, that's something we're in the process of doing right now. Baker Tilly's in the process of doing that so that we know what we're, um, so we're know what we're offering and what we're looking at, you know, producing, if you will, and as opposed to, with respect to like, how much can be invested, things of, uh, uh, the, you know, the sewer expansion, sewers, I'm sorry, sewer extension or the water extension or storm water, things of that nature. Yeah.
Alright.
But we have had those discussions.
Okay. So are, is Baker Tilly gonna gi- give you a report back soon?
Absolutely.
Okay. Alright.
And then we will work with them and figure out the best. Uh, it's not just our solution, it's also what's best for the develop, what works best for them with respect to their um, capital stack and things of that nature and what they're gonna invest.
Okay. So they, uh, I had a post discussion with the, our preliminary discussion with the gentleman in the vestibule tonight coming in. And they said that, that these are gonna be like build the suit and that, uh, height on the ceilings is gonna be, or the roof line is like, is that correct? Thirty-four feet?
So the, the, usually what, um, is used to determine the, the height of a ceiling i- in an industrial building is the clear height and that is the height to the bottom of the rafter inside the building. Um, and it is a thirty-two foot clear building. Um, a- and, and this would be a speculative building, you know, so basically what we are doing is building the shell. Um, and then providing an allowance to a, a tenant, um, which they can use to, to build out the building to their specifications.
Okay. Is, is that, is that, uh, a good ceiling heights, Clarence, for development?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Good evening, Clarence Hulse, EDC NC Director. We've been looking for a developer like this for a while, um. Um, it's in my report to get to you guys next month, but we have no large empty building in Michigan City anymore. We have, uh, one on the contract, the old GAF, roughly a hundred eighty-nine thousand square feet. We have a, a local company looking to buy that right now, ten million dollars, you know, eighty new jobs starting, waste twenty-two bucks an hour. And then the, uh, fellow mobile billing is also on the contract. And it's been bought by a private investment firm out of Milwaukee and they intend to spend, uh, and so on the money, millions to upgrade it and also subdivide the property to build more buildings. So, uh, we get tons of leads a last year and a half. We can't respond. There's no billing. So this is a welcome for us, uh, to have Michigan City. And as he said, it's a spec building. They build it. I can tell you by the, the minute it's announced, they'll start getting phone calls. Um, the building, the building up front is a, uh, a multi-town building. We have a number of local companies right now trying to expand from ten thousand to twenty thousand square feet. We've got no place to put them. So we want to keep the companies here in Michigan City, so this is a good thing for us. They're growing, so.
Okay, thank you, Clarence.
Turning in the comments from the public.
Yeah, Tommy Klobic, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street. I think this is like an accident waiting to happen. The ingress and egress on P for Road four hundred north is horrible. The roads, there is ter- these strike terribly. It's been that way for over, over a decade. The striping is almost non-existent. Uh, you're gonna have semis coming and out of this place. It's even harder just pulling out of the works. Uh, you're gonna have semis coming and out of this place, it's even harder just pulling out of the works liquor store, the BP Mart or the Walmart in that area or Speedway, you got traffic every which way, I think this is you really wanna really need to look in in into the safety and in the aspect of that with all the semi traffic this is gonna generate.
Thank you, Ms. Cloud. Uh, we have a question online, Mr. Matt Ritter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a quick question for the group, I I couldn't tell specifically where the parcel was. But when I was looking at it, it did look like it fell within the current La Porte County four twenty one ninety four TIF area and perhaps uh planner can verify or. Hello? Yeah.
What was the question again?
Is that current property within the county TIF area for twenty one and four?
Four twenty one two, no.
This, this is further down towards Walmart, right? Isn't it further down? Yes, on the south side of four hundred north.
So I would like to just verify if it is or isn't, I was after the impression after talking with a broker that actually fell within the boundaries, just to caution the group that any additional revenues generated by the project would be collected by the county tip by virtue of the fact that there's debt on the project. So that would also include any city portion that would be generated as a result of the annexation. Um, we haven't had a redevelopment commission meeting to discuss it, certainly the county has no opposition to any growth and development, we just wanted to make the city council aware that if that particular parcel or part of it or any of the improvements fall within the existing district uh per statute, those funds would be collected by the county, even though it was annexed and would uh be used for debt service. I just wanted to make you aware of it, perhaps Clarence and uh the group could reach out and we could define if this was within the existing area or not, before the city council would want to move forward with it.
Jesus Christ.
Was the, was the county approached with this project first or was it straight to the city?
No, straight to the city.
For annexation, okay, or any more public comments? Thank you, Mr. Ritter.
Um, I'm pretty sure, um, we will reach out, but I'm pretty positive that it's not in the four twenty one TIF, it is further down uh the street from there. But we'll obviously look at it again, but I'm pretty positive it's not.
Uh, Mr. Mr. President. Yeah, or, yeah, in order, what I'd like to do is make a motion to table this till we can find out exactly from the county if this is in La Porte County TIF area or if it's in.
Uh, Scotty said it's not, but we're in a public comment, so we'll uh hold that motion till public comment is complete.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street, um, Paul Preswellinsky made a great point. We've been on the hook for so much and we always find out at the last minute. We gotta put water sewage, uh payday Cardinals, uh factories turn out to be nothing, I think we need to know more about what's going on when we bring pro- projects here. Um, redevelopment is a good thing if you redevelop it for the people that live here, but right now it look like redevelopment only is working for a group of people you would like to come here, so I hope you do your due diligence and make sure you don't sign off on nothing that might cause us harm in the future, um. Train station is one of them, so thank you, Paul.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick, any more comments from the public? Comments from the council, Councilman President.
Yeah, I'm making motion to table this until we can find out from the county exactly where we stand with this uh if it's in the La Porte County TIF district or if it's in whatever the statuses of of that, okay? Uh, what Mr. Ritter was talking about.
We have a motion to table by uh Councilman President, and that would be until the information is provided.
Right, yeah, so that's in two weeks, it's two weeks second.
We have a motion to table by Councilman President, let's get in a second by Councilman President, uh, it's not on the vote.
Mr. Davy?
Nay.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Nay.
Ms. Dyche?
Nay.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Nay.
Ms. Jigus?
Nay.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky?
Aye.
And Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
We have four in favor and five opposed.
Okay, motion fails, miss, uh, any more comments from the council?
Uh, one more, please, uh, you know, what I'd like to find out is uh by the next meeting is with the uh utilities, how much it's gonna cost? For any water, any sewers, anything like that, I want to get a hard number of what the city or who's ever gonna be paying for this, how much it is? Yeah, we're not gonna be just going down the road, then we approve this, so we still don't know how much it's gonna cost. And if we just have to hold back on it, we're gonna hold back on it until we get that number, so we can make a due diligence decision, and I like the decision we got stuck with for eight million dollars that was made three years ago and it fell off the shelf and nobody knew what was going on, then all of a sudden we gotta come up with eight million dollars. We gotta know upfront before we move down, and I'm sure that you gentlemen can understand yeah, what what's us, I don't know if you heard what happened to us, but anyway, we're not getting into those details, but yeah, we just, it's not gonna happen again, it's not gonna happen again to me as far as I'm sitting on the city council. Okay, and I know that you guys can respect that decision, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, Councilwoman Dyche and Councilman Davy.
Yeah, well, uh, well, it's exactly what Councilman um Privilinski, but who's gonna be paying for it, I guess is more important than how much, long as we're not on the hook for it, I mean, I guess that that's one thing, but also by the next one, can we have the information, Skylar and um Mr. Hulse? Um, if you can reach out to the county and have that information to us, not by the next council meeting, but by next week if possible um through email and through the clerk's office, if we can receive it, um, that will be beneficial. If you all heard me back there, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Councilwoman Dyche, Councilman Davy.
Yeah, real quick, uh, about the the property that we annexed uh out there for two twelve, I'm I'm trying to make sure I get the property right, but we didn't have any commitments of any builders uh for that property, so now we have a commitment of somebody who has a building that they're saying they want to build on this this annex property, so it's a be apples and oranges to me. Uh, we want to annex and they've already, you know, have a plan of what they're gonna put on there to start bringing tax dollars into the city. I don't know why it just lights up as something that's uh slammed up for us. Um, but obviously we're gonna see this thing through uh to the end, but just seems to make sense to me.
Thank you, Councilman Davy, any other comments from the council? Uh, Mr. Hulse.
Can I intrude? Uh, I just got a text from my, the guy who did the uh fiscal plan, he saw he went through the whole county tax districts, it's not in the TIP, the county district, so.
Thank you, Mr. Hulse. Any other comments from the council? Comments from the council, okay, council comments closed. Uh, thank you, this will be held over for second reading. Miss, uh, night of our first ordinance and second reading.
An ordinance on second reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Riverboat Fund for Legal Services content to contest the proposed NIPSCO rate increase, and this is introduced by uh Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Any comments from the squad?
As uh, as I said at our, talked about at the last meeting, this is so we uh have uh uh professional legal services for the uh appeal on the rate case in Indianapolis. And this is gonna be over overseen by uh uh, our legal department and the uh amount is at fifteen thousand. And I believe that um, there's a, I I I believe that there have a letter of uh services with the firm. And that, and I I I will say that we need representation at the table to cross-examine their witnesses that they bring to the table on this rate case. And also is that I hope the county goes ahead and does the same because they passed the resolution at their last meeting after we did, saying that they were opposed to the rate increase, well, I hope they go ahead and uh take on legal counsel to go to go down there and fight for the residents of the county. Or if they want to contribute to the cause, that they work out something with our uh mayor and legal department. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman, uh, any comments from, uh, this is our formal public hearing, so any comments from the public?
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street, is it public record who's the attorney that's gonna be handling?
Yeah.
Is, who's the attorney that's gonna handle taking this mi- this matter?
Uh, they are contracting with Mr. Freeman Associates.
Mr. Shaw. Do you think it'd be um in the best interest of uh the whole county if the city reach out to the county people and see if they wanna join forces and save the city some money and the county come up with their part, we come up with our part and maybe save ourselves some money and fight for everybody and maybe, just maybe.
Well, I I don't know how, where they're at with their uh contract for services, but the whole thing is that the, I can't speak for the county, but it would be nice if they they come into the uh process. That's all I'm I'm saying, and uh at this point in time, I think they have to do a lot of legal uh research and things like that and write, write up a a uh you know, Rodney, I tell you, it would be nice if the county would join.
Yes.
It would, and I don't have a problem with that, I don't think the mayor's got a problem with that, I don't think anybody's got a problem with that. But the fact of the matter is, is that I know that we need to be in front of this, not behind it, so uh we need to move forward.
Yeah.
And 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 what I'm, what I'm getting at is this, Mr. Mr. Freeman has have a very good record in front of a a URC, Utility Regulatory Commission.
Well, they start off high and then NIPSCO end up going down to three percent, but that's here nor there. I just wanted to just know if any lines of communication.
I I I have, okay, because I I saw that in the paper the other day and I did not have a discussion with Amber or the mayor on it. But they're, they're hearing us right now, so.
Yeah, well, Mr. President, I hope the mayor of the city, since he's so worried about what word I'm running for, what I'm doing. Maybe they'll call over to La Porte and see if they can work partnership and finally work together to get something done in the best interest of the county and the city, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick, any other comments from the public? Any other comments from the public? Any comments from the public, public comment is closed, Councilman Council.
Yeah, Mr. President.
Councilman President.
Yeah, I'd like to have third reading on this this evening too, second.
We have a motion to have third reading by Councilman Paul Pres- I mean John Preswellinsky and second by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky, it's not upon the vote.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
And Mr. Davy?
Stay. Nope, instead of stay.
Oh, what's staying, I'm like, I need to hear it, I don't know. Uh, we have uh eight in favor and one abstained.
Thank you, Ms. Nilo, can you please read this uh ordinance on third reading, please?
An ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Riverboat Fund for Legal Services to contest the proposed NIPSCO rate increase, and this is introduced by Mr. Paul Preswellinsky.
Any comments from the sponsor?
No, not at this time, I think we've covered it pretty well.
Thank you, Councilman, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public, comments from the council? Councilwoman Dyche.
Um, when is the I, the the hearing, I don't?
Uh, I believe it's gonna be, I mean, it's right.
Yeah.
Mid-March?
Okay.
Um, March eighteenth. I changed, it's what I was.
Sorry, around March eighteen.
Okay.
Is what Mr. Friedman had told me.
Alright, thank you.
Any other comments from the council?
Yeah, real quick.
Councilman, uh, Dave.
Thank you, um, and the abstain vote, uh, there is a possible conflict of interest with the position that I I work, um, and then person being a board member. Uh, so abstain from the voting, just as I did when we had issues with the Housing Authority Board and uh there was a relative of mine on that board and I abstain from all votes from that, so I'm doing the same thing here, just to avoid any appearance of uh conflict of interest.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilman, uh, Paul Preswellinsky? Oh, sorry, Councilman Don Preswell.
Uh, motion to approve?
Second. By Councilman Don Preswellinsky in a second, by Councilman Paul Preswell, this is not on the vote, please.
Mr. Matt?
Aye.
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Davy?
Stay.
And Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
We have eight in favor and one abstained.
Thank you, Ms. Nilo, can you please read our uh last ordinance on third reading by title only?
An or, to, an ordinance on third reading by title only approving additional appropriation in the budget of the Engineer Department of the General Fund for On Call Engineering Services, Hassan Associates and Primary Engineering for twenty twenty three. And this is introduced by Ms. Dyche.
Thank you, Ms. Nilo, any comments from the other?
I I do have a question for our legal counsel, because um I do have an amendment to lower the amount of funding, and this was on, uh, had a formal public hearing on uh February seventh, uh, with no objections during the formal public hearing, but since it's to decrease it, does that have any bearing on it?
So you would be, you were intending to amend, decrease the amount of the appropriation, correct? I think you can decrease the amount of appropriation anytime.
Okay.
Yes, I think the the increases, I mean, it's the, it's the watchdog principle, right?
Right.
They want to keep an eye on it, so if you're decreasing your appropriation, I think you're, you're good.
Alright, um, I'm moved to allow for amendments on third reading.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilwoman Dyche to amend on third reading and uh second by Councilman Paul Preswellinsky, Ms. Nilo, want to vote, please?
Ms. Dyche?
Aye.
Mr. Don Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Ms. Jigus?
Aye.
Mr. Paul Preswellinsky?
Aye.
Ms. Tillman?
Aye.
Mr. Davy?
Aye.
Mr. Fitzpatrick?
Aye.
And Mr. Matt?
Aye.
I'm sorry, there's not been paper and no one posts. Sorry. It passed.
Oh, sorry. Sorry about that. Okay, so uh.
Want me to read it on third reading?
Yeah, we'll be reading this on uh third re- we we've got the amendment passed, Ms. Nilo.
Nope.
Councilwoman Dyche.
So uh, so I would like to uh move to amend uh this uh ordinance to reflect the change, you all received them in email and you have them at your desk, and the amendment um spells out uh Hassan Associates for fifty thousand and Primary Engineering for a hundred fifty thousand for on-call service for engineering, so um, the change is down below where it says. Um the change is down below where it says decrease general fund eleven oh one to two hundred thousand dollars. From three hundred fifty thousand dollars and increase account eleven oh one, one one four point four three one point zero two zero. To two hundred thousand again, um reduced from three hundred fifty thousand dollars. That's my motion.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion for by Councilwoman Deitch and a second by Councilwoman Councilwoman Tillman. Miss Nilo, want to vote, please?
Mister Don Presley.
Hi.
Mister Simmons.
Hi.
Mister Juggis.
Hi.
Mister Paul Presley.
Hi.
Miss Tillman.
Hi.
Mister Dabney.
Hi.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mister Matt.
Bye.
And Miss Deitch.
Hi.
We have nine in nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, amendment passes. Any more comments from the sponsor?
Yeah, so this was uh so originally when um we we uh discussed the uh appropriation for the engineering services. Um this was the actual amount and I know we um talked about um. The amount and and how much we're spending. Uh I know that myself and Councilman Don Presley met with um. Uh Miss Tatiana George and um I know she was reposting um the position differently for the engineer. I haven't heard back from her um on any um any updates on the um engineering position, but um. We thought this would be adequate and that if they need more money, they should just come back to us if if that's the case, so that's the reason why for the amendment.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman, any comments from the public? Any comments from the public? Comments from the council? Councilman Deb.
Yeah, just the uh question uh for the the city controller and once again, you don't have to. Uh answer now, you just have something uh to me, but do do we already have invoices out there from uh. Primera and uh Hassan Associates that need to be paid? This this doesn't affect anything like that, is what I'm trying to say. I hope uh I don't think it would, but.
Yvonne Hoff, Master City Controller, yeah, the Board of Works will just have to redo the contract with Primera.
Can can we ask?
Yeah, and I'll just, that won't hold up any. Uh bills that we've already that we already have, any invoices that we already have, would that delay anything, make us late on any payments? Things that are already out there.
Well, if we use Primera like we did in twenty twenty-two, um we'll run through this hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Probably before June.
Okay.
So then we won't have any on-call engineering services for the.
Yeah.
Last seven months of the year.
And Angie addressed that, she said if they would need more, they'd come back to us.
Okay.
But I was just concerned that if we had anything that's already outstanding, would that do any exchanges? Would that affect anything that might be outstanding already, any invoices that we have?
No, we we've paid um.
We're good.
Yeah, the the only invoices we've had so far were finishing up twenty-two.
Okay.
So those have all been covered.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Deb. Any struggle happen with any uh Councilman President?
You know. How much? We're going through. At this point. A hundred and fifty thousand that we have on the amendment. And. I have a. How how much are we, how much are we actually paying the hour compared to? Uh local people? You know, I I I mean, I haven't seen any contract from anybody and I don't think I should have to request it, but at this at this amount. At this amount. We could probably contract three firms from Mich- from the Michigan City area. And that was my initial problem with the contract, that we have people here that we should be employing that live here. Spend their money here. And um. I I mean, I just can't, I just can't see, y- you know, uh I believe in that. You know, uh I guess it's from years ago about live here, shop here. And uh that's that's always and everybody always, you know, projects this, you know. You live in Michigan City, support your neighborhood businesses. Well, these engineering firms aren't local businesses. And they employ people that are in the area and that shop here and and visit our. Visit our stores and everything else. I mean, I think we need to really look up, take a hard look at this and. And uh s- see what we're getting, cause that's a heck of a lot of money to go to go through. And I heard the uh I heard the uh. Uh. Position of uh while we spent a lot of money before, well, I I don't think it was being really. Regulated before on what we were paying out in that one year, they paid out four hundred fifty thousand dollars. I thought that was absolutely, absolutely over the top. And that's, and that, my whole projection here is. Shop and support local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Deitch.
Oh, a- again, um the originally when I uh agreed to do this, this was the amount that we agreed to. And then there was something that happened with the Board of Works with three hundred fifty, the three hundred twenty-five thousand after the fact. And I think that was explained at the first meeting, so that's why um. Um decided to do that because we don't know the status of the engineer and where we're at. And if we could find out from, get a report, maybe not a re- an email, um finding out the status of the posting for the engineer. That would be helpful for the council to know as well, so um we would appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Deitch. Councilman President.
Well, I guess uh my concern is is also this. Are we paying for to Primera, are we paying for the city? Out of uh our funds. To Primera to do the reconstruction of Franklin Street, or is that being paid out of the redevelopment commission?
Minister, you're talking about the two-way conversion?
Yes.
That's being paid, the engineer is being paid from the redevelopment commission.
Okay, do we have a amount on that? Do you have a ballpark or? Okay, and who? Who's who's uh who's gonna be doing that for us, do you know?
Prem- Primera will be the engineers, uh but we haven't, we we have to bid it out in contractual, you know, get. But to bid it out still, so we don't know, are you talking construction?
I'm I'm talking about what's going on right now, you know, there. Meaning we have.
Yeah, it'll it'll have to be bid, all that has to be bid out, it's part of a big project.
Okay. Who's paid for that already? Somebody paid for that, they didn't do it for free. Did we pay for that?
No, the redevelopment commission paid for it.
Okay.
Yep.
And what was the amount on just that?
Um I'm not sure, Paul, I'd have to go back and uh and 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 pull the pull the contracts.
Uh we can use a local firm.
They Brad lives here, he is local, he's a local engineer.
His firm's not local.
Right. Yeah, but.
That's my position.
Yeah.
Thank you, Councilman. Uh Councilman.
Yeah. And I'm I'm. I'm projecting, I'm projecting that this will pass. But my concern is next year, when we set up the budget, when we set up the budget next year. We set up the engineering department next year. Eliminate this part-time engineering position. And fund it with full-time salary, put in a full-time engineer and be done with this. And and I understand that that full-time engineer will have to go out and hire engineering work. But at least we have an individual there that's gonna be working for the city. And we can get what I think more work done, cause basically all we're doing is we're taking two hundred grand. Even though doing that to to other firms, when we could take maybe a hundred and forty thousand. And have one person sitting in there doing the engineering work for the for the city and possibly getting more. Return on our investment than what we're doing now. Yeah, so I hope the administration looks at that next year to hire a full-time. Engineer instead of a part-time engineer. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from council?
I'm for adoption.
Support. Have a motion to adopt by Councilwoman Deitch and second by Councilman Paul Presley. Miss Nilo, want to vote, please?
Mister Simmons.
Hi.
Mister Juggis.
Hi.
Mister Paul Presley.
Hi.
Miss Tillman.
Hi.
Mister Dabney.
Hi.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mister Matt.
Hi.
Deitch.
Hi.
And Mister Don Presley.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, ordinance passes. Uh new business, FYI, Mayor Perry is requesting the. Advice and consent of the Michigan City Common Council regarding his appointments. Of Jessica O'Brien to the Michigan City Human Rights Commission term will begin immediately and expire November second, twenty twenty-five. How is this one to vote on right now?
Yeah, it's advice and consent. Do we just, yeah.
Miss Nilo, want to vote?
Support, I mean, I um. Support the advising consent of the mayor for Jessica O'Brien.
Thank you. We have a motion by Councilwoman uh Councilwoman Deitch and second by Councilman Dabney. Just now want to vote.
Miss Juggis.
Hi.
Mister Paul Presley.
Hi.
Miss Tillman.
Hi.
Mister Dabney.
Hi.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mister Matt.
Hi.
Miss Deitch.
Hi.
Mister Don Presley.
Hi.
And Mister Simmons.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nilo. Congratulations, Miss O'Brien. Unfinished business. Twenty twenty-three council committee assignments, nominations and vote social status African-American males. Are there any nominations?
Yes.
Uh Councilwoman Deitch.
Yes, I nominate um Councilwoman Sean Fitzpatrick.
Second.
We have a nomination for Councilwoman Fitzpatrick by Councilwoman Deitch and second by Council, Councilwoman Tillman. Any other nominations? This for the Social Status Commission, council appointment. Any other nominations? Uh Miss Nilo, want to vote, please?
Mister Paul Presley.
Hi.
Miss Tillman.
Hi.
Mister Dabney.
Hi.
Mister Fitzpatrick.
Hi.
Mister Matt.
Bye.
Miss Deitch.
Hi.
Mister Don Presley.
Hi.
Mister Simmons.
Hi.
And Mister Juggis.
Hi.
We have nine in favor and no one opposed.
Thank you, Miss Nilo. Congratulations, Social Status Commission. Uh nominations, the council has the fulfillment appointments to the Michigan City Social Status African-American males. Term expires February fifteen, twenty twenty-three and are all one-year terms. The incumbent uh resigned ministers, ministerial association, Linda Faye Conley. Uh NAACP, Willie Mills at Sponson Center, Dwayne Hurd, Michigan City Air Schools. Do we have any uh letters from any of these organizations, Miss Nilo?
We haven't received any, but I did. Uh Linda uh Conley was in today and she will be bringing one from the NAACP.
Thank you, Miss Nilo.
And and I know the school system with Mister Dwayne Hurd, they um they'll send a follow-up, they. Thought that was for this year as well, so they thought it was just to fulfill and and for twenty twenty-three.
So are these terms expired? So are they able to meet? Or will this have to be addressed at that time? Got you. Okay. Okay, all right. Thank you, Miss Nilo. Uh comments from the public?
Yeah, Tommy Clavik, thirteen sixteen Ohio Street, I want to give a reminder that as pursuant to section two dash four five seven, the Michigan City Commission on the Social Status. Is required to give an annual report to the common council at their first meeting in March. That'll be your next meeting. I will be looking forward to hear what they have to say. Um first of all, next week, I want to want to wish the Michigan City Wolves Boys Basketball Team the best of luck. They start their tournament trail in the boys' sectionals at La Porte on Tuesday. Their opponent will be South Bend Adams, is a team that they lost. By ten points uh further this year and they're the defending sectional champions, so I think we're gonna. We we we've been, I say knock the best team out, then the rest of the rest of sectional will be ours, and then on. On March fourth, we're only be hosting the regionals, but next week on the eleventh, we'll have the good fortune of hosting the semi-state. This will be the first, only the second time in the history of our, all of our schools that we've ever hoped in a semi-state, a big, big event we've landed. Um I think the last one was in two thousand twenty-one in Ames Field, we all remember, we hosted the football. Uh semi-state. We now have for twenty twenty-three, we have the semi-state according to Mrs. Linda Simmons from the Elkhorn County. We have the semi-state for twenty twenty-four. This will be a big, big event. We took that. This from Lafayette Jefferson High School, they've been hosting it for since nineteen eighty-nine. Um I want to congratulate, we've hired a new uh head varsity football coach in Michigan City, Michigan City High School, his name is um Cody French. He previously coached, coached for a couple of years at Kelly Mad, he's been in Isles, Michigan, assistant coach at Alcart Central, Alcart High School. He's a graduate of the former Saint Joseph uh College in Rensselaer. I want to congratulate him and um just want to just say go whoa, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lowry.
Rodney McCormick, six seventeen Union Street. Um I just want to make a quick comment about what Mister Perry got up and said about me. I don't know the fascination of me running for office, and let me make sure that everybody understand, I'm running for the first ward. Period, point blank. There's nothing they can do about it. They lost bad, the Democratic Party lost bad going against me in in the county and it looked bad for everybody as a president. We have a problem with our city and leadership. And I think we should focus on leadership in the city instead of focusing on Rodney McCormick. I have a whole life to live. I'm gonna live it, ain't nothing you can do about it. Um. I try to be a good steward and but sometimes you start hearing stuff that you get tired of. And it's just time for us to move together, move on and come together. I'm glad that elections are coming up. Cause we need much needed change needs to happen. I wish it was sooner than later. Um. Ms. Nelson, you, Ms. Deitch, you said on the uh redevelopment. I don't know if this is the right place or to come to, I was at the redevelopment meeting. I am upset with Burnham Brewery coming to our, coming to my resident, to my neighborhood. Um. Nobody came from the first ward, our representative, nobody came and asked us, I had a workshop and say, hey. This brewery is coming to your neighborhood, do you want it in your neighborhood? Nobody asked. Um. It would've been nice if we had would have had, received a heads up, maybe somebody would have been for it, but from the doors I knocked on. I haven't found nobody that was for it. Um being a public servant means you serve the public. You don't serve yourself, you don't serve special interests. You don't do the things that are wrong in our community. And when I say by wrong, that means not informing the public of what's coming on or that's coming into their neighborhood. And like I said, redevelopment is a good thing. We like to see redevelopment, but I'm not gonna lie to you. Go on redevelopment for the people that live here already, that's gonna be here three hundred sixty-five days of the uh of the year. Not somebody that y'all hope that's gonna come off the train from Chicago or wherever the train may stop next. And 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 think that they're gonna come here because we're getting more breweries or uh we getting a bigger White House mall, I don't know what it is. We need to worry about the people that live here in Michigan City. And somehow, some way, uh we all lost track of that. It's not here to throw shade at anybody or for you to come back and make a comment about me or say anything, it's it's. That's irrelevant to what I'm talking about. We have the right as citizens to know what's coming to our neighborhoods and we want to make sure. That we are part of the redevelopment. Don't force nothing down our throat. And if it's such a great idea, I challenge any one of you, move it out to Long Beach, move it over to Sheridan Beach, move it over to Gardena. Put the brewery over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mister McCormick. Any other comments from the public? Thank you, Mister McCormick. Any other comments from the public?
Brian Gross eight thirty West Sixth Street, Michigan City, I'd like comment on the brewery too. Um, I assumed it got rezoned. For the purpose it's gonna be, I'm not an adjacent property owner, I'm forty feet too far away. So I know I wasn't noticed about notified about any rezoning. I have a question on where everybody's going to park. The property behind it is privately owned, in fact, all five lots back behind them are privately owned. There's a street on the one side, there's an alley that is used on the other side and then US twelve is on the fourth side. And on site, they have parking for maybe five or six vehicles. So is it only gonna hold five or six people? Or are there other plans someplace for doing parking? For this, which is not going to involve. Shutting down alleys or streets or something else. You know, I I just have a big question about, you know, people just uh having to cross streets and everything just to get to this place. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh comments from the, any more comments from the public? Any comments online? Comments from the councils? Councilwoman Dyche?
Uh I'll answer a couple of those, like you can go to the redevelopment commission, but. Um this project was started prior to Mayor Perry's administration and this redevelopment commission that exists, so. Um this this project began long ago. Um, and it's been underway for several years, it's been in the paper, it's been in multiple. Um iterations that um and I know, I know, you you brought up my, your concerns to me, uh Mister McCormick has, so. Uh but this has been a project that's been underway for a while and I know that. Um, it's been publicly stated, as far as the parking, I have no idea. Uh that's with the redevelopment commission and and the plans have been shared and I'm sure you can ask those questions. Um of of Mister um York, um but this project has been underway for a while. And again, uh also thank Mister K Klawick for um bringing up the sectionals for next week. We also have some Black History Month um items um that are underway, so this Thursday is our last film. For Black History Month, um five thirty um PM at the AMC Theaters, families, bring your kids. It's free, um this week's movie, I I don't have it up, I was looking for it, um but. The cool thing about the movie night is that we have young people that are actually having a conversation after each movie to discuss the movie. Um, last week they had the rare essence um pop up, um which um happened last week and this Sunday at the Stan Holcraft. Um Auditorium at Elston for a dollar. Um, just a dollar donation, um we're having the uh express yourself talent show this Sunday. Um afternoon, so after church, um go on the website, uh go on Facebook and you'll be able to see all the events that are happening. And then last but not least, please go to the library and see Mister Alan Williams. His Black History um display that's at the library, it's a wonderful depiction of of the history and the culture. Um from this area, um he's done a wonderful job and uh just continue to um. Show your support for these these organizations that are um supporting Black History Month, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dyche, uh Councilwoman Draganus.
Okay, uh thank you, uh I'd like to remind everybody to please fill out the survey for Michigan City Area Schools, they need to have community input. And the best time to do it is when they're asking for it, so either go to their website, I also have a link to that uh on my website. And it's it's due by February twenty sixth, so put them input in. I also have been working on a rental inspection program. For a year and a half, so there's a lot of parties involved and hopefully we'll be hearing something soon about a workshop. Discussing it and talking about, you know, what the plans are, thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Tillman.
Um, thank you, Mr. President, um just two things, um to add on the movie, um Councilwoman Dyche is Selma. And also, I don't know if um anyone is familiar or remember. Where your your child or someone that you know at the age of thirteen to where they could be a page. Um, in Indianapolis, where young Hoosiers are interested in government law, politics and or community involvement. Are invited to learn about Indiana State Government by participating in the House Page for a Day Program at the Indiana State House in downtown Indianapolis. Um, from my understanding, usually, um students or students are. Selected by their school or a teacher from their government class or history class. We speak about passing the torch on to our youth, um I think that this is one opportunity. Um that some of our commissions or boards may want to um look into this and possibly sponsor a student. To go and participate in this, um there is an application online. And it gives all the details of what what the deadlines are, if I'm not mistaken, if I can read this. Um, the twenty twenty three legislation sessions of the Indiana General Assembly. Is expected to run from January tenth twenty twenty three through at least April twelfth of twenty twenty three, so there's still time. Um, I will also say for um. President Fitzpatrick, this may be something that you may wanna also bring or present to the social status. Um due to that they have funding, this will be one good use, uh if they could sponsor a student or students to attend this. And it tells what the requirements, the age, um dress code and things of that nature, what's um required.
Good, thank you, Councilwoman, Councilman President.
Councilman Dan?
Yeah.
Alright, uh real quick announcement, uh Thursday, February twenty third. Uh the Water Tower Park renovation project. Uh the wa- uh park and recreation department is seeking public input. And they will be at the Michigan City Fire Training uh Center. At uh twenty five oh one East Michigan Boulevard, for those familiar with the area, that is near the Water Tower. Uh playground up there and um they're looking for public input. I posted uh plans or or conceptual drawing, what's gonna happen on Facebook. I had a pretty good response out there, but if you wanna have your public input Thursday, February twenty third from five thirty to seven o'clock. At the fire training station. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Any other comments from the council? Councilman Paul, please.
Um, yes, I would like to uh thank the park department for uh. Having the uh. Vezivo lit up. And uh. Working on the new lights down there, I guess, uh I talked to Shannon earlier today that they're working on a grant. To relight that uh whole thing up with LED lights, but also that they uh. Did apply for a grant for the uh War Memorial there in uh the War Monument. In the center or off to the main entrance of Washington Park. And they didn't receive it, but they did light it up and I wa- I drove through there the other day. And that is truly pays homage to. All all the uh soldiers, whether they fought in that particular conflict or any other. Any other conflict, because uh recently, you know, it's it's Black History Month. And um I was watching a program the other day on uh. US Grant. And uh talked about. The Black Union uh soldiers, um very educational. Program on on the this individual. And gives you a lot of history of uh the Civil War and what it was fought about. And I just um. You know, you can't say enough about individuals. And also, I think that US Grant. And he was called Unconditional Surrender Grant. That. The impact he made on on our nation. During that Civil War and afterwards, even though a lot of people didn't like his administration, he had a, he had a very difficult. Time, but also. I am very happy to say that. You know, through the movement is that. Every day is a day to do something good and something well. And if you're gonna do it, try to do it to the best you can do. And uh. I I just got, I have to say that. Many, many, many times. That I think about. All the good that can be done. That. People just walk away from. And uh. I think that we need to stop and reflect. As being serving the public, is that what we can do? What only takes a few. Few phone calls or whatever it might take. But on uh another note, I wanna to remind in uh. That what Mister Kavalek was talking about earlier, that. The negotiating team is setting up a date, we have had discussions with our chairman and now. Uh, we're not, we're not forgetting about. The pay scale or anything else. We understand that and we are, we are gonna meet with them and get get going here. Thank you, Mister President.
Thank you, Councilman President, Councilman President.
Yeah, just uh. Real quick, although this email just may be a little bit. Long, but I I promised the uh young lady that I would, that I would read it. But before I do that, I wanna thank Mister uh Tommy Kavalek about the uh. Text and the picture you sent yesterday about the alley in five hundred Holiday Street, yeah. And uh. Yeah, I took a right past that and that was very bad. But I do wanna thank Connie Adams from the Refuge Department, I called him at seven o'clock this morning and asked him to go over there and clean it up. And by ten o'clock, that pile of garbage was uh out of there, unfortunately. We don't know who did it, but hopefully somebody will be caught. Doing that, cause I guess that's been an ongoing issue on that particular piece of property, according to Mister Adams. So anyway, thank you, Tony, for bringing that to uh our attention and and getting that taken care of. Uh, the other thing I'd like to talk about is uh. A young lady named Nora Riska, and I know we're all familiar uh with Nora. And the uh great Michigan City Green Clean Campaign that she's been doing for a number of years. So I I took the opportunity to call her yesterday and talk to her about some of the things going on. So she sent, she sent me this email with some details on it, on what her group is doing. And what we can do to get Michigan City cleaned up after the uh the winter. And she goes on to say, greetings, friends, spring is just around the corner, let's do a Michigan City makeover. The great Michigan City Green Clean is gearing up for a major cleanup campaign in April. Can you make us, can you help us make Michigan City the cleanest city in Northwest Indiana? From April first until Earth Day, uh April twenty second, we are inviting residents to take part. In helping to make Michigan City the cleanest Northwest Indiana and beyond, what can you do? Form a cleanup group, in the past, we've had youth groups, sports teams. Girls, Boy Scouts, school groups, small businesses and groups of friends gather together to focus on their neighborhoods. City streets, parks, playgrounds to pick up litter and debris. We are here to help, the Green Clean can provide technical support. Buckets and grabbers and a social media platform to help you organize and make your cleanup goal a reality. Cleaning is contagious, post your event and progress on the Michigan City Green Clean Facebook page. And more great news, the city is working, which is true. To, cause I've been talking to Skylar and code enforcement. The city is working to put the necessary pressure on the big businesses like Myers and Walmart. To clean up their own properties and surrounding wetlands. Some of this property is also owned by the Redevelopment Commission. This gives us the opportunity to let the professionals tackle these areas. And allow us and focus on our neighborhoods, parks and playgrounds and city streets. However, you can help by calling the big box stores corporate numbers. Meyer, Walmart, PetSmart, et cetera, and make them clean up their properties. Also, if you see an area that really needs the help and you should possibly be done by a professional team, share it and get the help. And we can kindly help them get on board with this community initiative. It is time for big businesses to take corporate responsibility. For the trash they're producing and the wetlands they are destroying. Large and small businesses can sponsor cleanup days in their own communities by providing gloves. Trash bags and cleaning the area surrounding their location. Please consider the best way that you and your friends and family can help. As we gear up for spring, let's give Michigan City a makeover, one street at a time, thank you. Thank you, Mister President.
Hey, Councilman, any other comments from the council? Any other comments from the council?
Move for adjournment?
Move to adjourn.